We're gonna get started.
Is someone awake?
Yeah, I know, I was late. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight for our zoning public hearing. My name is Stephanie Phillips. I'm the chairman for this meeting for tonight and my last meeting. As I usually do, my administrative information. For the record, the petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on 11-7 and November 21st, 2017. These properties were duly posted on December 5th. And the rest of the administrative agenda is we had, we did have several items on our agenda. We had six and through a number of things, we're down to one. So let me go through them for the record. The first one was a tax amendment from the Stratford Building needs. It has been withdrawn. The second one was 45 North Parade and 245 King Street. It has also been withdrawn. The third one, which is 140-180 Watson Boulevard from the asphalt roof recycling center, that has been continued to January 30th. The fourth one was a tax amendment, a petition from Erstadt Biddle Properties that has also been continued to the 30th. And the fifth one, which is 50-104 East Main Street and 25-65 Sidney Street, another petition by Erstadt Biddle, has also been continued to January 30th. So tonight, we're only going to be hearing one application, which is 225 Lordship Boulevard. So if there's anyone here who is attending because of those other properties, I just want to make you know upfront that those properties will not be heard and the only one property will be heard tonight. Tonight, we have four commissioners, Mr. Rich Fedett, Ms. Linda Pepin, Mr. Steve Raguskas, and myself, Stephanie Phillips, along with our zoning, planning and zoning administrator, Jay Hibansky, and our secretary, Gail DeCilio. So thank you all tonight. I don't think we have a town attorney, but I'm not so sure that we actually need one. Okay, so the first item, Mr. Fedett, would you like to read the one and only item that we have on the schedule tonight?
Item number six, 225 Lordship Boulevard, petition of 225 Lordship Boulevard LLC seeking the special case approval to construct a 120,000 square foot self-storage facility in a CA zone. Coastal site plan review and erosion sediment control application is required.
Thank you. They also turned in their certificates of mailing last week.
Okay. Do you think it would be appropriate to warn them that they need all commissioners to vote favorably?
I'm gonna go through that, yes. That is actually, we actually contacted them ahead of time. Mr. Attorney Rizzo, you can certainly comment, but there is only four commissioners tonight. You are entitled to five, although four is acceptable, but if there is anyone who votes against it tonight, you will be denied. Is that acceptable to you?
Acceptable, Chairman.
Thank you.
I'm hoping this will be a nice, smooth hearing. We feel we've got a tremendous project and I would not want to hold up moving forward on this.
Good.
If you're ready, I'm ready.
We're ready.
Make this hopefully one of your shorter zoning meetings for the night. Try not to repeat myself like I usually do. So Chairman, all right, I'm on the clock. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzio. I'm representing 225 Lordship Boulevard LLC with regard to the property of 225 Lordship Boulevard. You folks are familiar with this project. You were great in giving us an approval to turn that hotel into a really top-notch, the former hotel into a top-notch apartment building. They're now under construction and we hope to be occupying in the spring 69 brand-new residences. With your help, we managed to grow the size of the units, reduce the number of units, and come up with, we think, is a first-class project. The building in front, the existing building is about a 60, over 60-foot-high building. It contains five floors and, as I said, 69 units. And this was always designed as a mixed-use project. If you can remember, originally, we talked about what type of uses would be out front. It's now gonna end up being basically a three-phase project. And the biggest challenge we had was how do we deal with our neighboring properties? And I'll get to the actual application at hand very quickly, but setting the stage, if you can pass these, it'll be easier to be trying to walk around. If I could set the stage, you all know this property very well. Anybody who's got off exit 30 there knows our Lordship Boulevard. You come by the old highway. But the challenges that we have are, is some of our neighboring properties. As you might well know, the first page is what we get the view off the back of our property, which is this tran, the transfer station. Well, actually, that's our asphalt, the asphalt across the street. Then we have another retail kind of distribution building that's part of that, an office building across the street, another office building across the street, and a tank farm to the south and west of us. Behind us, if you all know, is the town's transfer station. The asphalt plant, the asphalt storage facility, my understanding is coming back before you to even expand. So we've taken this old dilapidated hotel that was kind of a notel motel and have turned it into what we like to think is a first-class apartment building. One of the issues we have fought is trying to keep the property clean, trying to keep the property, the control of the uses that come off the property. As you know, we had a large landscape buffer across the back of the property. We can't grow trees high enough, quick enough, to protect us from the effects of the transfer station blow, both the odor when the winds change, the amount of debris that flies across into our parking lot. We clean up every day. We had a nice irrigation system for the vegetation, and that was eaten through by the rats that came across from the transfer station. So we have a real challenge into how do we systematically develop this property? Our clients have, our large apartment developers out of Stanford, and one of the things they came through, which they face in all their challenges, and if you can remember, it was interesting, I think a few of the commissioners were concerned of where are you gonna store everything? Remember, we had to actually build storage units, a certain percentage of storage space into this building, which got us along, thinking along the idea is, you know, the perfect use behind us would actually be some kind of storage facility. And we consulted with experts. They run all sorts of tests, demographics to see the amount of storage facilities that are in the area and which can accommodate, and then the location. And we came up with the idea of building a Cube Smart, which is a self-storage facility, which would be the perfect neighbor to this facility. This will be basically four stories, 30,000 square foot footprint, 120,000 square feet, with about 700 to 800 different style of units, some as small as, you know, eight by 10, and some as large enough along the back where we actually have garages where if somebody has an expensive car, they can store them. But the beauty of it is, this facility, which as you can see on the street, looks like a very nice, basically warehouse facility, will be, will be our buffer from the transfer station. So what we have, if you're looking off of Lordship Boulevard, as you come off the exit, you'll now see this totally renovated existing building. We're in the process of demolition, coming out to take down, looking at the conference center. Remember, there was a very big concern with what do you move that unleashed part of the building that stands out in the middle? That's all coming down, and we hope the place will face three, will be adapted for you sometime, either a retail or an office component for the front of the property. So in designing a mixed-use facility, this thing really turned into the perfect thing. We've got, we're gonna have some kind of retail office component up front with more than adequate parking, basically, it's very compatible parking with regards to time, and I'll show you that we don't need a parking lot, so that's no issue. Then we're gonna have, basically, we have our 69 minutes apartment building, which is well in construction and occupied in the spring, and then we have this self-storage facility to act as a buffer for what is what we consider all the heavy industrial uses that have a negative impact on residential dwellings and kind of more basic business commercial retail type uses. This is our facility. We have pictures to show you, front part, which is coming down. There is, this is, it goes through, there's just pictures of our facility. You can see, starts off at the front, which is gonna be demolished, that conference center park area will be demolished. And the beauty of that is it will allow us to build, it will allow us to open up the landscape. Currently, the property is not performing as landscaping into encourage this area. We are now to be able to satisfy the requirements, which is all the zoning requirements, to create not perfect areas that exist and also create landscape areas that exist. As you can see, when the conference center comes down, we actually create a large interior landscape core along with much more, you know, different type of landscape areas throughout the property and along the buffer line. We still keep the large landscape buffer along the back. As you can see, our client has already done that, and when you go to this picture, you'll understand why. Because if you look at the last couple of pictures, you'll see the trees out the back, the trees that we've been managing. We can't, we can't landscape it high enough from this year. And the use isn't going anywhere. The town owns it, it's maintained, if anything, it's just gonna grow as there's, I don't see this thing being expanded or letting anywhere other places define it. So how do we adapt to creating, usually, using between the residents, they're, you don't have to see this from the front. So you're not this Cube Smart building, it's a roofed building. And the great thing about self-storage facilities, certainly, it happens, first of all, doesn't take apart, doesn't produce, doesn't create any traffic, and, uh, this is the perfect spot for it because we have, we have not only more, we have a tremendous amount of storage space. And right off 95. So it's not, it doesn't just satisfy somebody who's only at the, access, the ones, the traffic to any Stratford neighborhood. The moving trucks coming down. It's four lane, in the industrial area. What is, what would go great here? We have so many things to talk about. On privacy, putting industrial uses to our rear, trees in and accomplished. We provide a basically, a definitely, basically, a wall. The building we have in there is, that building will still be shorter than the building in front of it. So you won't be able to see the height from the street, or it certainly won't, it won't pose anything. The only thing that's, will be taller than the transfer station and taller than the tank farm next door. So we're not gonna be disturbing anybody, blocking anybody, destroying anybody's view. In fact, I think we'll, from the overall perspective, we will be improving the view for everybody in the town of Stratford. You can feel it, put some existing, self-storage facilities, but they're not the old, you know, yellow bull doors that appear all over the place. If you look at the, this is like, we took the, some of the ones that we've seen around here, but this is what the Westies' style looks like. As you can see, there's another one right off 95, which is similar, you know, right off exit 25, believe it or not, right next to the new Range Rover dealership is a, is a self-storage facility. One of the unique things we did is around the back, we're gonna have 18 garages, and we're gonna have a gate. So these, this property will be gated off. You basically will be able to come in, you'll have swipe card, that'll not get in, the property is all online, and it's all made, this, we're gonna be able to come in, through the gate, certain time, the gate will be, like I said, automated control. There's an office that you have to check in before you go in, and then it'll be literally, these are a general layout of the type of cubes that will be available for rental, and then there'll also be 18 garage doors that we have elevation that shows that, which are around the Chris. But the garage doors will also be facing, not facing the road, so you won't have to rerun the garage door. You're gonna have much more to look at than an office-sized, nice warehouse building, not garage from the, from the street side. So they'll only be off the backside, adjacent to this landscape area, which will be 18 garage doors. We're only required to have 24 parking spaces. We have 24 parking spaces within the gated area. That still leaves us with more than enough parking. I can take you through that. We're required to have 24 parking spaces for the self-storage because you need one parking space per 5,000 square feet. We looked into, on the plans, it's not before tonight, I'm looking for us tonight, and I'm showing you this question, what can we do up front? I'm trying, sorry, I might give a poor job with this microphone. Sorry. We need to show what, like, the retailer and try to press on, we all support some doctors, some medics, some stuff like, but none of that is before you tonight. I know the commission is concerned with what we were gonna do out front. One of the things, when we went to the ZBA and got an approval, one of the conditions, I believe, was that we were gonna take down the conference center. We're in for the demolition permit, so we cannot do the self-storage facility without satisfying the requirement that that conference center, which has some, which has many structural issues, health, safety issues, is coming down. So all of that is in place, and in that, we end up with, we believe, a tremendous compatible use. One of the best mixed-use projects in town for what I would consider is a very challenged location. It's a great spot, nice square piece of property at a great corner, but tank farm to the south, tank farm to the, I guess it's toward the south, south and west, transfer station and an asphalt storage debris across the street. What do we do to provide and buffer this, these uses so that this becomes a productive property? And I think we figured it out. And when you think about what was there, we took a hotel that was before your planning and zoning commission, before your zoning enforcement officer and your blight officers for years fighting it out, and turned that into the tax revenue generating project that we have in front of you tonight. I think this has been just a tremendous upgrade, and I think we'd appreciate your support. I can get as detailed as you want, answer as many questions as you want, but I think basically the location, the elevations, the walk, and the reasons for why it's developed all pretty much speaks for itself when you look at the transitional part of this development. Keep in mind, this has nothing to do with going on up front. We are asking solely for the approval of this self-storage facility. Any other construction, we'll have to come back before you. I will tell you that we did receive approval from the ZBA because one of your regulations says if you have more than one building on a property, you need the variance. We did get that variance, so we will not have to go back to the ZBA. But I did want to show you on our plans that we have more than enough parking, basically, to satisfy a drive-in restaurant and any kind of retail space out front. However, none of that is being proposed. It's just to give you a feel for what, what we can put there. I'd be happy to answer any questions. As far as coastal area management, we answered, you'll see a note in there from Mr. Goucher. We answered all his questions. He's satisfied with the drainage issues that, improvements that we've made to the property. I think I have smaller plans if necessary, but we've submitted the plans to Jay already. Mr. Goucher's approved them. I can fairly accurate say, although I am not a coastal specialist, but this will have no negative impact on Long Island Sound or any of its resources. And for all those reasons, we respect the request to grant these applications, this application tonight. I'm happy to open it up to questions. I know you folks have heard about self-storage facilities and why they are, but we honestly believe this is the perfect location for it, and most importantly, the perfect use for this stuff.
Let me open it up to some questions.
Sure.
Okay, so we can move it along. Anybody want to start off with any questions? I'll go down the line otherwise. Mr. Fedett?
First off, I want to thank you for cleaning up the front piece of that property. It's been an eyesore, and it's, I appreciate that part of it. And I want to thank you for starting the avalanche of self-storage units that we're gonna have in this town. Other than that, you know, I don't have any questions in regards to what the facility looks very nice, and I agree with you that it will block a lot of the eyesore that, you know, from the street that we see, never mind just from the apartments. I think it was a good use of that, that section of the property, and the trees really weren't doing what you really want.
We can't, like I said, we just can't make them bigger. And I do appreciate the comments as far as the avalanches. So I think one of the nice things about it, we're kind of on an island onto our own. I don't think we may have some of the challenges other applications may have with regard to impacts on neighborhoods. This really is a, there's a lot of warehouse in that area, and although they may not be self-storage facilities, you have a tremendous amount of storage facilities that basically this is consistent with. The only difference is this, it's more on a small, more of a micro basis than some of the larger storage facilities up and down Lordship Boulevard. I don't think we're changing the character of the, I think we're proving the character.
I say whatever change is better, is for the better.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Pepin?
To get into the facility, you have to get in through where there, where the units are too? Is that, there's not like a little row? I know there's not like a separate road down there.
No.
No.
The gates, so somebody, unless you're, unless you're storing stuff there, you can't access the facility. From the street, unless you, unless you belong there, unless you have a storage area, you do have multiple accesses to the property from either Lordship Boulevard or the two on street here. And that, that's, but, my memory, we anticipate most people not traversing through this. I think they're gonna come down the side street, they're gonna turn in, they're gonna go into the gate, and then they're gonna certainly go right out. And that, this, this road itself has no residential traffic.
Right.
It's a dead end. It is, you know, I don't see any trap, I don't see any traffic coming here. The average stage is doing errands. So you're not allowed to, if you get, say, cars, they, you know, a lot, 120 downstairs building, you don't go in.
How many, how many storage units are in there, do you know?
All 800.
Wow. Yeah. I know, it's like the thing to do. My husband would like to rent one too, with all my stuff in there. I know, they're definitely, so this is like a franchise, this Cube Smart?
Yes.
Yeah. And then you'd have one person, what are they there like from eight, in the morning to eight, eight to eight, or they don't stay there 24 hours?
No, that's 24 hours. There are seven days.
Okay. Yeah. So there's not accessibility late at night or anything? No.
No.
Okay.
The other thing is it's fine up into the wall.
Controlled.
It's important.
Mr. Fedett?
Y'all settling?
Yeah.
Just one thing that had come to mind. You had mentioned automobiles being stored in there, and I know, I'm sure I know the answer to this question. It will be fully through the fire department, and the fire marshal will have final say on everything. What is allowed?
Our pill this year, but I can approve, yes is the short answer.
That's enough.
To be all invented.
That's enough. Yeah.
Good. Mr. Raguskas?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One, when you're talking about the entrance, I believe that's Watson Boulevard that runs along the side? It might be a suggestion to put up some signs directing people as that being the main way in so that people aren't driving through the businesses or whatever's gonna be in front and the apartment buildings.
We would, no problem. If the commission wanted to make that as a condition, that there'd be signage directing the, we wouldn't want to cut off Lordship Boulevard's access.
Right. But just to encourage people.
We would certainly agree to that as a condition of approval, that there be signage on Lordship Boulevard directing self-storage, directing people to self-storage facility off Watson Boulevard. That would be no issue at all. I think it's an excellent idea.
The other thing, it might be a little more of an issue for you. The picture, it's a beautiful-looking building, except for the walls are just big and stark. I mean, the area on the corners are really nice with the windows, and then there are just a couple of really long, big walls with nothing but the names. I'm just not sure if there's anything that can be done.
Well, one of the issues is you really, in dealing with self-storage, I've got a number of these, is that you can't break open windows.
Right.
Unless you put some kind of, I guess what the others have, faux windows. So we believe that the way they construct these is meant to be very attractive on the corners, attractive signage, attractive on the street level, and then once again, you have, this is gonna be high, a 60-foot-high building, sandwiched between a transfer station, tank farm, and across the street from asphalt storage facility. One of the important things for us to think of, show to our clients, one, we can keep the smells out from the transfer station, lack of impact from debris.
I got this, this is the false window.
But it's gotta be, it's gonna be functional.
It's gotta be practical. I understand that. And it looks like it's gonna be nicely landscaped, so that adds to the appearance.
Remember, we got, they got, you know, over $10 million investment in the building in front of it. So, I mean, it's substantial investment that they're looking to protect, and this, and this business will be on to its own, but that facility in the front is very important.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I have a few things, and I'm gonna actually pivot off of Mr. Raguskas' statement because that's exactly where I was going with is the design of the building. I want to compliment you, as I do agree with Mr. Fedett, cleaning up that area, renovating it, all the things that we really, really want to see. I compliment you on that. And the idea of a self-storage sounds reasonable, and I agree, we seem to be popular now with self-storage facilities. And I understand the need to cover, or at least hide, from the transfer station, and the trees can't grow fast enough. I live down that way. But I'm looking at the actual design of the building, and not that it's a bad design, but it is barren, kind of stark, and it does represent the gateway into Stratford off of 95. It's very visible from the highway as you pass by or get off the highway. It will be the first and probably the most notable image of what Stratford is. So I'd like to take the opportunity to do a couple of things with it and that design of those walls. You talked about the false windows. I do think that there's some false windows that look good. They look like windows, and I think you might want to consider that. But in addition, the idea that I'd like to bring forward to you is Stratford has a rich history with aviation, Shakespeare, the water, coastal side. We have a lot of things that we're very, very proud of in Stratford. It's an opportunity to display images of those things along the wall, and service are welcoming, and a little bit of marketing of the town. Now, I know that's not necessarily your responsibility, but it would bring a lot of pride to the building. I think it would be decorative, and it would also add to the whole feeling as you travel through the town of what we are. And it's not just a building that's a storage building. We do have enough square boxes in that area. This is an opportunity to actually make it look better than just another square box. Is that doable?
I'm just talking to our, our.
One of the things we could do is some improvements to the elevations with regards to not having this, a large mural is the very, very difficult in.
I wasn't even thinking it has to be a mural. Actually, I've seen some wonderful carvings or drawings, different, different images of different things. There are different ways of approaching that. I, what I'm asking for is, and I don't know if you have all the ideas, but there are, it does not have to be a mural. It could be window shots, you know, large windows square of different.
Madam Chair, could you actually see that though from the thruway?
Oh, yeah. You'll see, in fact, if you, in one of these pictures, you'll see how high this building is. It'll be very, very visible.
You're not gonna be able to see.
And the people living in the building will be able to see it.
You're gonna have a 60-foot building in front of it.
But those people will be seeing it as well, and it will be very visible from the highway. I mean, I can see the tanks very well, and I can see into the backyard. I pass through there all the time. But what was your thought?
My thought is, I'm not an architect. That's probably the first thing. I can tell you the functionality of these. I can tell you some of the prettiest ones, which I've seen, which if you've seen Westies before, you see the ones along the highway. They try to do what they can in.
They try to do what they can in the areas that need to have people trans, meaning where your elevators are, where your corridors are, to be able to give, um, to, to give windows where they can bathe. If you look at the inside of almost all these self-storage facilities, why they tend not to have window issues, is you try to have circulation so that you can preserve the best flow. And once you, if you put corridors down, you cut your, you cut your ability of the amount of units you can put in head. So in other words, if I had to put a corridor this way, I mean, you, you lose the ability to have spaces on both sides.
I'm not, that I understand that.
What we would agree to do is if the commission would like, if the commission could condition their approval, that we hand in revised elevations for the commission's approval prior to issuance of any kind of permits. So, um...
Elevations.
I mean, certainly you have the ability to still look at elevations, but I can't draw it tonight to make, I can tell you what, all the, all the type of, all the facilities that I've seen from a self-storage facility, if you look, and that's why I kinda took the pictures on the, if you look at the westies, if you look at a, um, they, they, they're built this way because of the functionality of the design. I can tell you, if you put images in the windows that the commission would mind.
Let me, let me try to recreate the image in your mind so you can understand. I'm not asking you to put in windows. I'm asking you to put pictures on, to, to, you used the word murals, maybe that is an overstatement. Not one big mural, all right? But you could probably fit three, maybe four picture window, and I'm using the word window in the sense of describing a square box, okay? Of various images. I think we're gonna do it on one of our schools, in fact. Where one image would, may have been about aviation. Another three feet, there would be another square with a picture of Shakespeare. Another three feet, there would be a, a picture of our coastal area, all right? These are pictures, paintings. Maybe that's the way. Paint it on the cement. Just paint it. And they would actually deplete. What I'm trying to do, and what I'm asking, is not to look like every other warehouse that we have. Not to look like the westies, not to look like. This is a building that everyone's gonna see, probably identify more than any other building in town.
I understand in, in, in certain instances where streetscape is extremely important. And I understand where, Chairman, where your heart is, but if you're looking for the, for the, for the streetscape that we're talking about, and the size that we're talking about, and who will see or benefit from it, on Watson Boulevard, the only people are gonna see it are bringing stuff to a dump, or to a contract, I think Barrett's down at the end, or dropping off their asphalt mill, asphalt millings. I don't know of one residential, one reason for anybody to drive down there except to get rid of their, their garbage. We're hoping to give them, we wanna accept the things that they're gonna reuse and keep and not throw away. From the front, there, there is no way to even spare, to see this building from, as you drive down Lordship Boulevard, from the, uh, from, from, from the highway either way, because we have the building blocking us to the, to the east of us, we have a 60-foot building in front of us as you pass in front of the building, and then we have the tank farm to the left. I still think I-95 is far enough away that, um, this look will be more visible in, if a, a classic look to, to, a, a, a nicer look to the building, and any images will be lost. So I don't know that anybody can ever get close enough to see the images, but for a few of the people in the apartments. And from that reason, I, I, I agree wholeheartedly where, where your heart is on this and where your vision is on this. I just think in this area, which is, we're visually challenged, we're, we're challenged, we've got birds that are trying, I mean, you can't imagine the birds over there. In this instance, I think we're trying to make it as attractive as we can, as low maintenance as we can, because we have maintenance issues that are not from our site that are, that are imposed on us. And I think we have a really attractive, um, built, colorized and everything else, I think we can...
Are you at a disadvantage 'cause your architect is not here? Are you at a disadvantage because your architect is not here?
Um, not real, well, our, our construct, if Bill, if you wanna, Bill Machete?
Because I, I do, I actually do drive 95, and I can see the whole property of...
No, I know that, but seeing any images from 95 as you're flying by?
These are pretty big images, and they don't have to be a lot of them. I just threw out some ideas. But something that decorates the bare walls.
Uh, Bill Machete, who's our... My name is William Machete, President of ACG North America. We're the design builder for the, the project. And I, I would like to say that there's one thing that wasn't brought up, and that is the, uh, the glass windows that you see inside this building have that opportunity built in. That's part of what Cube Smart as a franchise likes to have. So those images that you see that look like windows and people in office spaces, it's actually an opportunity to introduce exactly what you just asked for with a, an image behind there. It could be a large painting, something that you would see from a distance. But in these, in these areas, right here, throughout the building, you have that opportunity to back...
So you couldn't paint on the walls that are, the, yeah, you couldn't paint on those?
We could.
That's all I was saying.
Yeah.
That's what I was suggesting, and I think that's what Mr. Raguskas was also. We're just asking, could you paint something on those walls, on the outside, that would be attractive?
I think as long as we could do it affordably, that would be the concern. We would, you know, getting into a professional mural is a pricey thing, but we could probably do it with an ephes shape and give you some kind of a, of an aesthetic look that you'd be satisfied with.
That would be nice.
I think it's, it can be done.
Actually, I, I think there's opportunities that if you had the time, would be, there are people who will do it for free just because they are artists who do murals, and you could, you could make it something very community-minded and gain a lot of goodwill and publicity from it, if you so choose. But again, I know that you will see this from the road, 'cause I've actually gone and looked to see the tank farms. I can actually count the cars if I wanted to. It is very visible, and I know the people, and I would say the folks who are moving into your building in front of it would probably appreciate it as well.
Chairman, I guess just procedural, that kind of, um, if you'd like to make that a condition of approval, I don't know how we're gonna, how we're gonna, I mean, to continue it and come back with pictures and show you what...
No. I would like to make it a condition of approval, that you work with the planning and zoning administrator to come up with a decorative idea and, and work with his approval on that.
Chairman, I have no objection to it. Part of that was just, I just, you know, somebody's art is somebody else's, and I think we'll, we could, we would certainly accept that as a condition of approval and come back with some sketches and improvements to the elevation that this commission will be hopefully have.
I think you see, in fact, I think you've got a letter from the planning and zoning administrator, November 6th. I have a copy of it here. And he actually did recommend that as well, as part of those.
I have no problem, we have no problem with accepting that as a condition of approval. We trust this commission and working with Jay that we can come up with something that...
I'm sure you could.
Madam Chair, I have a question. So does, does Cube Smart though have rules and regulations that when they put up, you know, that, that might be part of it too? I don't know if they have...
I think going through the approval process, I think they, they, they have, and Bill, you're here, they, they have flexibility...
Flexibility.
To work with the elevations, to adapt it to a community. I don't think they're gonna let them put golden arches up there, you know, things like that. But as far as adapting to the community, that's not a problem.
And that's all I was saying. Something that adapts respectfully and aesthetically to that.
We're very, we're very comfortable with the commission and Mr. Urbanski and working that out in the future.
And that's all I was looking for, your cooperation to do so. Okay? Mr. Urbanski? Do you have any thoughts? Anybody else have any thoughts? Okay.
Chairman, I guess I'll sum up and just say that we believe we've met all your, all your regulations required for special case in this instance, and we require, we certainly have no negative impact on Long Island Sound, and we believe through the review of the engineering department, we've satisfied all your erosion control issues in respect to request this commission grant this application with the conditions that we discussed tonight. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this point, I'm gonna ask, bring it to the public. Is there anybody who is in attendance would like to speak in favor of this property, of this application? Anybody would like to speak in favor? Is anybody who would like to speak in opposition, opposed? Again, anybody who's opposed or just has a comment one way or the other? Seeing that there isn't any comments, I'm gonna ask the, for a motion to table, Mr. Fedett?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
I second.
Second by Ms. Pepin. All in favor to close this application?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is closed. Thank you very much. And if you bear with me, we only have one application. Can we go right into administrative session? Oh, that's right, I forgot the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
By Ms. Pepin, by Mr. Raguskas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for under that. Now, I'd like to open up the administrative session if anybody has any opinion. This is yours. Okay. Right off the bat, we have several properties, like I said, number one, number two, number three, number four, are all been either withdrawn or continued. We only have one property that we have, 225 Lordship Boulevard. Is there anyone who would take a motion, Mr. Fed, to take it off the table?
I'd like to take item numbers, what was it?
Six.
Number six, 225 Lordship Boulevard, off the table.
I second.
Second by Ms. Pepin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Fedett?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve with the presentation as it was at the beginning. Not that I wanna put a burden onto these people for their additional work. I don't believe that you would be seen from the highway or the street. So whatever they presented, that's what I would like to approve. However, I am going to ask for one little thing out in front of the property. I would like a sign that says, "Welcome to the town of Stratford." I would make that a, uh... Yeah. 'Cause I, I, I believe that the back building really is not visible enough that anything that they put in, if they would like to put something on there, present it to Jay, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't wanna make that, you know, part of the...
And I'd like to ask, would you accept a friendly motion that they work out some additional aesthetics with the planning and zoning administrator to make that property more aesthetically pleasing and artistically pleasing for that, for that building and that neighborhood?
I, I just don't wanna hold them to it. If they bring in something to Jay and for our final site plan or our final approval, and we...
There wouldn't be a final approval. This would be the approval, but it would be up to Mr. Urbanski to make the, through his, uh, expertise to see what's approved.
Look, they bring something to him, and Jay feels that it's worthy of being on there, then I'm okay with that.
So you'll accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So we've made a motion. Ms. Pepin?
Did we want signage that, um, to wear, to, to guide them to the facility? Remember, we talked about signage, Steve?
Yes, we did. So, so we have, so we have...
Yeah, I would like that friendly amendment too.
We have three things. One would be to add to town of Stratford, welcome?
Welcome to the town of Stratford.
Welcome to the town of Stratford. Two, aesthetics on the side of the building, graphicly of such to the satisfaction of the planning and zoning administrator. And three would be signage for the storage facility, correct?
Yeah. Direct, like a direct...
Directing them towards Watson Boulevard.
Directing them towards Watson Boulevard, correct? Mr. Urbanski?
I just have one, one more condition that I would recommend. I'll leave it up to the commission. In order to remain compliant with the town's MS4 stormwater management plan, we're asking that the applicant provide a letter to our office from a licensed engineer assuring compliance with the town's MS4 stormwater management permit.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
We got it all? Okay, we have a motion?
I, I'm gonna second that motion.
Second by Ms. Pepin? All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Good job, guys. Very good. You want your pictures back?
Oh, yeah. Just, let's see what else. Okay, we have just a couple more things. We have the approval in the minutes on November 14th. Is there a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the minute.
By Ms. Pepin, second by Mr. Fedett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr., okay, Mr. Urbanski, just, we have to waive the rules to add two items that should have been on here. So under the campsite plan review, East Main has been continued, and Watson Boulevard has been continued. But we do need to waive the rules to add 225 Lordship Boulevard. Mr. Fedett?
I'd like the motion to waive the rules to include...
Wait, 225 Lordship.
225 Lordship Boulevard and what other one?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it for that. Okay, we'll have to do it again under sediment. Motion by Mr. Fedett, second by Ms. Pepin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we need to vote on that. Is there a motion to accept the campsite review?
Motion to accept.
By Mr. Fedett, second by Ms. Pepin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What was that? Did I miss something?
There were suggestions that I had that were from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Let's take this back. Before we make, didn't see. Come closer. We have a, a motion to approve, discussion by Mr. Fedett, or there was motion by Mr. Fedett, second by Ms. Pepin, and discussion.
Discussion.
Motion to withdraw my approval?
Yeah. Motion to withdraw. There you go.
For discussion.
For discussion. But we still need a motion, so now make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve it with the additional language that Mr. Urbanski...
We're, yeah, we're gonna do, and Ms. Pepin, second. Now you get to go.
I apologize. So one of the, one of the recommendations from Mr. Goucher from DEEP suggested that the applicant submit a revised sheet plan that we can keep in the file, so that we, that's consistent with what he approved and recommended. The second was that the applicant submit a maintenance plan to ensure that the parking areas and all the catch basins remain, have a long-term effectiveness for stormwater retention. That's something that's a pretty general recommendation that we will do from time to time.
Is that, is those changes accepted? By Mr. Fedett, by Ms. Pepin?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. So we have a motion on the, that's been motion, second. Anything else? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Do we have any zoning enforcement study?
No.
Accessory apartment applications?
No.
But we do have sediment and erosion control applications. Okay? And we're gonna have to waive the rules. 50 East Main has been continued, but we need to waive the rules to add 225 Lordship.
Make a motion to waive the rules to include 225 Lordship Boulevard, uh...
Motion by Mr. Fedett, second by Ms. Peppin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. And now, let's make a motion to accept, and I know he's going to have more, so, yeah. By Mr. Fedett, second by Ms. Peppin, and...
To include the...
To include.
Verbiage that, uh, Jay has to include.
Well, we have predicted discussions.
Standard conditions of approval for soil, um, for erosion and sediment control. Um, just basically that immediate onsite modifications are employed if there's an issue, um, that they have to call the zoning enforcement officer once all the work, the erosion, uh, measures have been in place and we can inspect and make sure they're done properly. And last, that, um, the commission has relied on the information that they provide us and, um, they need to be accurate and complete and, complete, and if they're not, we will pursue enforcement.
Excellent. Are those recommendations acceptable to you, Mr. Fedett?
Yes, acceptable.
Acceptable?
Yes.
Mr. Fedett, good. Anything else? A motion now is on the floor with, uh, the recommendations of the planning and zoning administrator, and they have been accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? It passes unanimously, thank you very much, God bless you. Thank you. Um, planning projects, Greenway, Ms. Peppin, do you want to give a report?
Nothing right now with the change of administrative, um, new mayor and stuff, so we'll, we'll have more in January and early February. Um, and I will keep you posted through probably Chris Hillhavy.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, right. Um, if you all agree, the items that are on the goal setting I would dispense with for this evening, um, I expect that they'll, they may change with the next, uh, group that's coming forward. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. And of course, we get to the best part, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Peppin, second by Mr. Fedett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You all have been wonderful tonight, and thank you for coming out for the one application.